This is the Eastline Board of Selectmen meeting. This is the regular meeting of July 7, 2021. Second half of the year already. If you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mrs. Hardy?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Any additional agenda consent items?
No, I'd like to under New Business to move to F up to the first thing under New Business so that we get the people we're appointing so we can get that done and they can either enjoy themselves staying with us for the rest of the meeting or depart.
Terrific. I'd like to add under number one, after, as part of subsection D, we had the June 25th minutes in our packet, but we do not have it on the agenda for approval.
Oh, the June 23rd meeting?
The town meeting?
No, I have June 25.
Is that the special, not emergency meeting, but the special five-minute meeting?
That was the sixteenth.
That was the sixteenth. Then we had the, on the 23rd, we had the town meeting, which was not yet enough.
Okay, right. And also, I would like to add under number two, letter G, further discussion of the American Rescue Funds.
That's under Old Business right after, right here.
Where? That's a special appropriation. That's just for the special appropriation. I'd like to have further discussion of the funds in general.
How about if we make that under three, three B?
I'm agreeable.
Discussion.
So that's your motion is three B will be discussion of?
American Rescue.
American Rescue.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have that motion. Any other comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, five, five zero. And we'll, we'll just agree to move that up. We don't need a vote to move the appointments up.
No.
Delegations. Would anyone like to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening on any items? Anyone at all? Anyone from the public? Okay, approval of the minutes. I don't, Mrs. Hardy, I don't see those other minutes in my packet.
I think, I think it was just a special memo.
Okay.
I thought it was.
All right, so let's, let's follow the agenda then.
Yes.
And if we need to clean up later, we will. There's a regular meeting of June 2nd?
I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes on June 2nd, 2021 is submitted.
Second?
Second.
Motion in, second. Any comments or corrections?
Yes, on page four of the minutes, down at the bottom, 3A, this was a report on the American Rescue Plan.
Yep.
And the third sent, fourth sentence from the bottom, "All the funds need to be spent by the end of 2024." Was it at that meeting that we were told that the date is actually 2026?
Yes. That's the, they have to be expended by the end of 2024.
Well, this is what it says. "All funds need to be spent by the end of 2024."
And that, and that data sense slid to the 26th.
Okay.
It was originally spent and by the 24th, and then it became allocated or appointed, you know, appropriated.
After this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, it came out after the meeting, correct. But good catch.
So that's accurate, 25.
It is. We were talking, that is accurate of the minutes of that meeting.
Of that, as of then.
As of then, correct. Any other comments or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Terrific. June 16th.
I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes of June 16, 2021, as submitted.
Second.
It's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? There's a consent calendar, a very small one tonight.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of June, July 7, 2021, in the amount of $665.81.
Second.
Motion in, second. Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. We'll go right to the appointments. We have two folks here this evening that, here with, their background is also in your packet, and I think we're appointing four people total.
Total, yes.
Right. So here tonight for the Police Commission, a long vacant position, but we wanted to find the right person, and sometimes you wait on purpose to find that right person. And we did the right thing by waiting, because Mrs. Hichery is here. Regina is a friend to all of us, all of us. We all know Regina and all her good work in, in the world, but especially in our town. Regina, I'll invite you to the podium if you'd like to just say hi. We, we know who you are, and you've given us your CV, so we kind of know your qualifications, and we appreciate you stepping forward to be a volunteer.
Thank you. Well, I volunteered because I think policing is always a really important activity in any community and making it a place that we all want to live. But I think particularly at this point in our nation, policing has gotten extra attention. And when I realized you were looking for members, I approached my neighbor, Mark Powers, knowing he was on the commission, and he sent me along to talk with Mark. And I would be pleased to serve and continue what looks to be the excellent work by the commission so far, and the meeting that I sat in on, I found just to be very collaborative, nonpartisan, and that's the way I like to work. So if you put me in as a commissioner, I'll do my best to carry out good policing for all of the citizens of, of our great town of Eastline, where I've now been for 34 years, the last 11 of which full-time, but for a long time drifting in and out. So happy to be here.
Thank you, Regina.
Thank you.
I'll keep it there. Is there any questions while we have?
Yes, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
I knew you would.
Very impressive resume. Thank you for all you've done over the years, many different aspects, not only of our community, but also you're involved in so many other activities. This, of course, has become a very sensitive commission because of the national issues. The Board of Selectmen had requested an additional police officer, which the Board of Finance eliminated, and I was wondering if you had, what your opinion would have been on that?
Well, I've, I've read the background of it, and it seemed to me that there was a good rationale between the police chief and the commission in terms of why the town would benefit from greater policing as the town has grown and the demands on the town have, have increased. And it seemed to me like the case had been made. I also could see why, for budgetary reasons, the decision was made to partially approve now and then look, look to the future for additional people to join the police force. But I think like any department in, in a town, you've got to keep looking at it and understanding what's the value and what, what is the population? What do the citizens want?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I'll just state, you know, I appreciate your desire to be involved with a nonpartisan organization. This board has been nonpartisan as well, and, you know, we, along with the commission, fully endorsed that second police officer, and the finance committee didn't find a way to fund it this year, so hopefully it's something that we can bring to the town in the near future.
Got that right. Got that right. You can make that motion?
I will happily make a motion. I'll move to appoint Regina Hichery to serve as a member of the Board of Police Commissioners for the Town of Eastline with a term to expire on January 3, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any further comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. Welcome to the Police Commission. You'll have to be sworn in by our town clerk at some point in your travels, and then Sandy will be sending you out agendas and all that. Welcome aboard. All right.
Thank you for your interest.
We have another citizen in our midsts tonight who wishes to volunteer, Kathleen Kuvalanca. I know her as a baseball mom, but Kathy, you're here, you might as well come up and say hi.
This is for Parks and Rec.
This is for Parks and Rec?
It's not, it says.
Yeah, right here. Let's make sure we have that right.
You have, you probably have an older agenda.
We have two people on Parks and Rec, don't we?
And this agenda has Parks and Rec.
All right.
Did we get it updated?
There was a change before, a mild bit.
Okay.
Okay, so it is on.
I apologize.
No, 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 okay, so we're on. Okay, good.
Well, let's get you a copy of the original.
That's all right.
Sorry, Kathy.
That's all right.
Hi, we can still say hi to you.
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thanks.
Introduce yourself.
Sure. My name's Kathleen Kuvalanca. I have lived in Niantic for about, it's coming up on 31 years, two children who've grown here in this community. I'm a teacher in town, been a teacher for, just finished 21 years.
Wow.
Was a social worker before that, done various coaching and activities with kids since I was in high school.
Good. You teach over at the middle school, right?
I'm a teacher at the middle school.
We all know, I guess all of us with kids know that. Great, great. And, and you're stepping up to be on the Parks and Rec Commission, which is, and seen a new generation of citizens step up, which is nice, and we appreciate you stepping up.
Yeah, thanks. I have to say, I started really becoming more aware of the philosophy and the approach when I worked with Mike. Our service club at the middle school was doing projects in conjunction with them, and quite frankly, where the school system would say no for a lot of reasons, two different ideas that the kids would have, the Park and Rec Department never said no. So at that point, I was like, I really need to work with these folks more because they were just so enthusiastic and made things work no matter what, so I thought it was pretty cool.
They have a can-do attitude, don't they?
Yep, yep, yep. So, thank you.
Thank you. Nice, it's nice to see you.
I'll move to appoint Kathleen Kuvalanca of 8 Morton Street, Niantic, to serve as a member on the Parks and Rec Commission for the Town of Eastline with a term to expire on January 8, 2024.
Second? That's a long time, you know. It's a big commitment.
2020 what?
2024.
All right.
All right.
I'm in.
This isn't just a two-week project. Any other comments or questions? I'll, I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? I thank you both for coming out and, and introducing yourself. That's nice. We do have two other people to vote, well, to vote upon tonight. Do you want to put a motion out there? Now we can talk about who they are?
Right. First off, put the motion out for the other individual for Parks and Rec Commission. It's Rob Tukey. We have his bio on one of the back sheets. Rob's an attorney, and obviously he's got a wife who's in the school system.
Teacher, I think.
Counselor, correct? Counselor in the school system for a long, long time. And, you know, he's obviously been active. He's got a son that just graduated this year, longtime active in coaching and so forth like that, and with his background being, you know, Little League, soccer, basketball, and lacrosse as well, so I think he'd be a definite asset to the Parks and Rec Commission. And so in that case, I'll move to appoint Rob Tukey of 111 Sleepy Hollow Road, Niantic, to serve as a member on the Parks and Rec Commission for the Town of Eastline with a term to expire on January 3, 2022.
Second? And he's filling a position and expires on 2022?
Yes.
Okay, that's why that that is a different date?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I know, I know Rob was, I think, president of the baseball.
At one time, yeah.
At one time, and he's been very involved with youth sports and all that, and, and this is a natural progression for baseball moms and baseball dads. You know, we might have a reputation as a good lacrosse town, but baseball still rules. I'm just saying that. For the record.
Would you like to state something?
Right, Joe?
Yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? That's great.
And the reason, the reason Kathy got the 2024 and Rob got the 2022 is that was, she was, that was the position he came open first, and Kathy was the first one we reached out to, so.
Understandable. There's another very well-qualified person who has, has put his name in for the Inland Wetlands.
Right, I'll move to.
Gregory McIntyre.
McIntyre. I'll move to appoint Gregory McIntyre, 3 Barrett Drive, Niantic, to serve as an alternate on the Inland Wetlands Agency for the Town of Eastline with a term to expire on January 3, 2022.
Second?
Motion's seconded. Are there any comments? His, his four or five-page CV is in here, and he's obviously.
Extremely well qualified.
Well qualified.
Is he present this evening?
No.
Roseanne, would you move the microphone a little closer to you so the people on YouTube can hear you? Not TikTok.
It's a little close.
I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? I will give permission for anybody who wishes to leave the meeting and not feel like that would be impolite, for Kathy or Regina. If you wish to leave the meeting, I don't think it's started raining yet. Obviously, the thunder is going on, so you might be able to get to your car before you get.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm not made out of sugar.
Yeah, we know that. We know that. We still don't want to spend any energy here. Thank you, ladies.
We'll go back to 2A, a special appropriation of the acquisition program of $1,241,500.
Let me get to my place, 2A. Sometimes it's just more tabs than there are pieces of paper in this book. There we go. This is a significant, this encompasses a whole lot. On the fourth page behind the support here for the request, you'll see the list. Joe Bogaz here from Public Works, Chris is here from Board of Ed and can explain to some of these, is, some of this is also points to technology. But this is the annual technology investment in our schools. This is the water company. As you know, the police interceptor, we pay for it, but the police pay us back through their fees that they collect through outside overtime jobs, so no longer do the citizens pay for that, at least directly. I think we end up paying for everything in this world indirectly. But water utility is buying two trucks, and you can see that, that list there. If there are any questions, Chris and Joe are here to, to help us out. Oh, I guess Dave, too. Is this why you're here?
Yeah.
No, you're here for.
And you have another item. Right. But, yeah, Parks and Rec had the liftgate snowplow package, which we're in need of replacing.
I'll put a resolution out through the.
Sure.
Oh, kitchen. Resolve that the resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Town of Eastline, Connecticut Authorizing Execution and Delivery of an Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement and Schedules Thereto for the Acquisition Purchase Financing and Leasing of Certain Equipment, a Copy of Which is Attached Heretofu is hereby adopted and recommended for Approval by the Board of Finance and the Legal Voters of the Town at Town Meeting. We waive reading the Resolution in its entirety as it has been on file with the town clerk."
While I, I can't say this is new spending, I can tell you that this is new, not new stuff coming to you. This is all in our packets during our budget season, and this, this all, this entire package has been supported by the budget that passed, obviously, at referendum. But if there are any questions?
I think we need a second on the motion, right? Second?
Thank you. Sandy would have caught that, right? Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Paul.
The only question I have.
Yes.
Is the fees that the police department brings in for their roadwork. Is that money going into a general fund or is it going into a vehicle fund so that we wouldn't have to finance these vehicles in the future? I don't know how lucrative the fund is, but it would be nice if that fund could cover the purchase versus the financing of the vehicles.
Right, so the, the funds are deposited to the CNRE fund, and they're, they go specifically for police vehicles and equipment. We set that up back a few, three to five years ago.
Is your question, can someday we pay cash for the vehicles instead of financing? I think when we get past this next, this highway project that's going to happen in a year or two, that will be a three-year project, we'll have an, we'll be so flush that we'll be able to start paying cash.
More than we have enough police officers to cover it.
We don't have enough police officers to cover it. You're right, and we might have to say no to some of the outside jobs and have the state police come in, even though it's our right to take them. Yeah, but, but that's two or three years from now, maybe we can.
If we go, if we could do that, I know, rates are low, but someday rates won't be low, and if we can fund them via this method, it'd be.
Absolutely.
Save some money. Thank you.
I think the intention is to get to a cash position. It's a good question. Anybody else?
Okay, just really, as you can tell, this, I don't, but we can see we're not on the camera up there. We are recording. Our mics are live, but Jess says she has rebooted four times and can't get us to go live, so it's some problem somewhere other than right here.
There's a connection problem, and all this will be fixed when we open up the new police station, because that's where all the new technology is, and that's where the connection will be through the PSD, PTSD lines. But, yeah, so we are live on YouTube, and we'll be playing the taped version throughout the week in access to the public. If there's no other questions, I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Terrific. Thank you once again. And, and the reason why we don't have questions is rate backup, not only in our budget books, is also here, so we, we appreciate all the information so we can get ahead of it, because there's a lot of information here. I think the next item is the CNRE BO, Board of Ed Pool Roof Funds for $20,000. The school is asking to utilize $20,000 of the funds we've set aside, which is almost $130,000 that we got is, in a, I guess, in a claim. So we were asking to spend up to $20,000. We have a quote for $17,000. Now, Chris, this is your project, right? Do you want to jump up to the podium if nothing else be available for questions?
Yes, so just very briefly, there was a settlement when the roof was built. I think the initial settlement was somewhere around $85,000 or $90,000, and through interest, it's grown. That money was set aside to deal with potential future problems that arose with the roof and ceiling, which is exactly why I'm here, because we are having some issues specifically with corrosion and, you know, chunks of rust are now falling onto people in pool on occasion, so we need to address it before it gets worse. What we're intending to do, the budget amount in front of you is to do an investigation into preliminary design, the necessary repairs to correct or arrest further damage. We're doing some destructive testing, so we're actually going to cut out a piece of insulation, look what's behind them as well, so there's an added expense in there of bringing the equipment in and tearing the stuff down and then replacing it in kind right away because we don't want to leave it out of place.
Yeah.
So, and I just want to make one correction on that. The Board of Ed, when they met, we, I had asked them only to approve the $17,010. So when I talked to Mr. Newt before I came over, he wanted to remind me that although we asked for 20 because of contingency, the Board of Ed only approved the $17,010.
So you'll only be able to spend 20, 17?
Correct.
Okay, because they, they only authorize you up to 17.
Right.
So we can keep it as up to 20, or we can, we can make an amendment to that 17,010?
I would think, I'd prefer to make the 17,100?
It was 17,010, I believe.
Very random.
If we leave the, the extra money there, they wouldn't have to come back to us if they find something, or the study takes a little longer to spend that extra money. To me, you know, if they're in the middle of the study and they have to come back to, they have to go back to Board of Ed, then they'd have to come to us as well, so that could cause a delay. This is my opinion.
I tend to agree with you. You'd have to get approval from your Board of Ed, of course, to spend an extra thousand, but we would have already given you permission to spend up to 20,000 out of that fund. So may, I, I tend to agree. Would you be comfortable with that?
Perhaps what you can do is just, like, add a statement, you know, provide that the Board of Ed, you know, approves the additional amount.
With the Board of Ed's approval.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll figure something out here.
Okay. Any questions? If, if not, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll move to approve a special appropriation of up to $20,000 from CNRE account 32-99-094-900-001, Eastline High School Pool Roof Reserve for a roof damage investigation at the Eastline Schools Aquatic Center. This is different from the $17,010 approved by the Board of Education, and the funds will be available if approved by the Board of Education and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. A town meeting is required.
Second? Okay. And we'll further explain that at the, at the Board of Finance level as well. Any other questions or concerns? Comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? I'm sorry to tell you, sir, that you didn't beat the rain.
No.
So, but thank you for coming out tonight. I appreciate that resource. Having you here is important. The next is the transfer FEMA funds to CNRE. We received those FEMA funds, you remember, at the beginning of the year, and while we spent maybe half of them on the police building, the other half was not approved to go to finish up the police building. So it sat, and it sat parked for upcoming projects, and with the, you know, ongoing COVID and our Public Works and engineering crew being spread a little thin and all that, we've, we haven't spent it, and it's the end of our fiscal year. We didn't park that money in a place where that would just continue to roll over until we spent it. We parked it in our general fund, and rather than that money go to the undesignated fund balance, the rainy day fund, we would like to keep it available for upcoming projects, whatever those may be, and this board will decide on those, those projects. So we're asking you to consider the rolling over, if you will, of the remaining funds, $175,446,000 of the FEMA funds to a CNRE account for us to access at a future date. That's, that's what we're asking for here.
Okay, I'll move to approve a special appropriation to the amount of $175,446 to CNRE Fund 32 Account 32-70-300-500-999, Townway Projects, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. The source of the funds is General Fund Account 01-01-120-200-500 contingency, the remaining balance of FEMA funds. Note, a town meeting is required.
Are there any, well, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Diggle. Are there any questions or comments?
In that, in that motion, does transfer appear to indicate that?
It's the title of the motion.
Yep, okay.
To approve the, and forward to the, oh, no.
Move, I, I amend my, to move, to approve a special.
Transfer.
Transfer, because it's not an appropriation, it's a transfer. So I'll change appropriation to transfer.
I'd agree with that. And Paul has seconded your, your amendment. Thank you for catching that, Mrs. Hardy.
And I'm not even on Parks and Rec.
Any other questions, comments?
One of the things, too, is we, we know there's a few people that had some requests in ahead of time for this, so, you know, some of these funds, if they ever became available. I think we talked about, Dave, you might have some need for some, for some sidewalk[1691.95] I think we talked about, Dave, you might have some need for some sidewalk repair and so forth like that on the boardwalk, the cracked ceiling and stuff like that.
Right, yeah. We were hoping to do that in this coming ball.
There were, there were 20 requests for, for not a lot of money. So there is going to be some opportunity there to spend some of that in various places, in appropriate places. The boardwalk, using FEMA funds to seal the boardwalk is very appropriate. And that's where we got the FEMA funds from, is the boardwalk disaster. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. We're talking carryovers tonight, lots of carryovers. This is another one where we have a retirement liability. Remember, we established a fund a couple of years ago in our budget in case someone retires because we carry an unfunded liability with our employees. They gain a lot of PTO time, whether it's vacation or sick leave or whatever. So at a time when they finally retire, sometimes they're owed some money due to contracts. So we have that in there so we're not scrambling and we're not in the mid-year stealing from the undesignated fund balance. And what we've done in the past years is whatever we haven't done, used, we have carried over rather than, again, it going to the undesignated fund balance. And we carry it over. At some point, the fund will get large enough as we keep rolling it over. And if there is a year where someone doesn't retire or many don't retire, we might not even have to fund that in the budget in a particular year. But we do know of many retirements coming up in the next, say, 12 months or 11 and a half months in this fiscal year, the remaining. So this will be a key part of us doing this pain-free. So if you would be so kind as to approve the $180,449 to, that we have remaining in our retirement liability and carry it forward to this current fiscal year.
Move to approve the carryover of the remaining balance of $180,449 in account 01-01-114-100-128, Retirement Liability from the 2021 Budget to the 2122 Budget, 22 Fiscal Year and forward to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. The next is the last item that we're asking for you to consider carrying over, and that's a contingency account. As you know, our budgets are pretty thin and we do have a contingency in our fiscal year that just ended and we would like to move that forward as well. We have a very thin contingency in the current fiscal year that just started. And we do, we're going to have some significant needs going forward. I think we're going to have some personnel needs frankly as well with added work hours and say the building department that was not funded in the budget. And they're overwhelmed to the point that we're not meeting state statute of getting permits approved right now. So we've authorized some extra spending down there. We're going to run out of money. But my biggest concern is when we move into a brand-new building, there's going to be unforeseen needs. Say it's furniture, it might be, we came up a couple of meetings ago, vacuum cleaners and wet vacs and things that we're going to need for that building and outfit properly. Maybe just signage in the building, et cetera. So if you would consider taking the remaining, almost $62,000, and again, moving it forward. It is, it's not new money, it's transferring that forward rather than bringing it into the undesignated fund balance.
I'll move to approve the carryover of the remaining balance of $61,803 in account 01-01-120-200, contingency from the 2020, 2021 Budget to the 2122 Fiscal Year and forward to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Thank you. Motion and seconded. Any comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. The next on our agenda is the special appropriation for the American Rescue Funds. Folks, this is another one of those things that, in my opinion, is not going to take a whole lot of conversation. I thank you, Dave Putnam, for coming because there might be one area that we might have some questions or need to be rebriefed on because we've already asked and you've given us a whole lot of information. But this package includes everything that we're very comfortable will be allowable by the U.S. Treasury standards that were set forth. As you know, most of these things, you've seen already because we approved an appropriation. But then the very next day, the U.S. Treasury had a webinar and their guidelines came out. And while we thought we were getting ahead of the curve, we found out we were a little bit behind the curve in that many of the things we wanted to spend the money on, we couldn't. There were things on that package that we could have moved forward. We said, let's do it in a cleaner version in a month and it's taken us two to bring it to you. Wi-Fi improvements at the town hall are needed. And it is something that would be approved by American Rescue Funds. Virtual meeting package, that is Zoom meetings for virtual meetings, hybrid meetings. So we could meet as a board, someone could be at home watching when we get our TV cameras working, and they could actually participate in the meeting, in delegations, ask questions, et cetera, or even make a presentation. And that's that second item for 14,000. Microwave dishes are part of the infrastructure of the town, the emergency management infrastructure. And we're looking to replace these microwave dishes. Initially, if you remember, that was in our capital plan. But we want to pay for them instead of through bonding or acquisition fund. We want to pay for them with this as it is an allowable expense. Security cameras, of course, are also an allowable expense. There's a variety of security cameras we want to put up, including ones that will keep our senior buses safe from the vandals that attack them twice. And we do know that mental health support and food support are necessary as part of the relief of COVID. A direct, a direct tie to COVID expenses and a changing world. Dave and the Youth Council have requested $75,000. $50,000 to $55,000 would go to in the packet. The packet includes what the presentation was, I think it's in the back here. Make sure I have it. Yeah, here we have $50,000 to $55,000 for a Wellness Prevention Mentoring Coordinator. This is, David, I'll have you come on up and maybe just explain that to us again. And then the second one is a kind of a per diem clinical therapist. And we estimate that to be about $25,000. That's why we came up with 75.
Right, absolutely. And so something we've been talking about probably for three or four years, if not more, of increasing staffing levels on the Youth Service Bureau. And as you know, a few years ago, we combined with Park and Rec and Youth Services. I think now with the kids coming out of COVID and not knowing what to expect here, is the appropriate time to use some of these monies for a Wellness Prevention Mentoring Coordinator. So it's kind of a long type of thing, but the prevention end of it would be kind of like, you know, the East Lime Youth Coalition and getting that more active and more vibrant and someone to run that. And then we did start a Viking mentoring program that was very successful to start with. Because of COVID and stuff, it's kind of fallen apart. We need someone to get that back and going again and be able to assign kids to mentors and also mentees, go both ways and work with the school system on that. So it's something that I think is the right time to move forward with this. And then the counseling part of it is, I know the drug and alcohol counselor at the high school is totally swamped and booked. This would help with counseling opportunities for kids outside of the school. And so that's something that we would look at too, and then also young adults too. Because we kind of fall off after they lose high school and we get into that 18 to 25-year-old range. So if this person could be able to do that and we do it kind of on a contractual basis. So I don't think we need someone full-time, but it is something that I think we could explore and look to contractually do something with a counselor or therapist position.
Are these added positions into the town's employment resources?
I would think as the contractual, no, part of it. But potentially the, I think it's important that, yes, I would think that the coordinator, the mentoring person would then become a staff person. But I know the monies are good through like 26 or four years. So give us an opportunity to make sure that, first of all, the position's vibrant, right? And then I think you're going to find that it's much needed and it'll be a big asset for the community.
If it shows its value, you might be able to convince the next Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance to add it as a permanent position. But should be hiring people or placing people in a independent contractor status?
That is my thought. I want to make sure we do it correctly. So I want to make sure that we're, you know, talk to whoever we need to talk to to make sure that that's the appropriate way to go. But I think because of the, and maybe I'm wrong, but because of that four-year thing, that it would be on a contractual basis. So that that person that would be hired would know, you know, I'd hate to hire somebody on a thing and then not know that, you know, the monies are good through four years. But after that, you know, I think that's important that that person comes in and knows that. And so I think it would be an independent contractor agreement. That's the way I'm envisioning it. If it's differently, then we can certainly adjust on the fly if we have to.
I know of two incidences this, over the last six weeks, maybe a third, that we could have used this where the police were involved, but there's nowhere to go. It's the middle of summer. These are kids that did age out of high school and some very significant, you know, people are going to be struggling during this. This is a very direct COVID expense that the American Rescue Funds pick up. And so I'm hopeful for us to go forward with this. Are there other questions for Dave?
So in essence, this is currently, this would be a temporary position.
Yes, right.
And so how many hours a week did you say?
I would think the counselor position would be 37 and a half, similar to what we are now. And then the, so that would be the coordinator position, so the wellness coordinator. The counselor position would be on a, on needed basis. So if, you know, if we're taking, you know, so we get a referral and then, you know, we can, you know, have eight hours. My thought was to start with eight hours a week with the counselor therapist position. If it's not used, then we don't pay out that $20,000. But if we do need it, and I think we're going to need it, I think we're going to use it. Does that answer your question?
Would this position then entail after business hours?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's our thought is after school hours, weekends, summer. You know, when the drug and alcohol counselor's not available at the high school, when we need counseling outside of school hours or people might not feel comfortable in the school. Or my thought is, you know, we really need to look at that 18 to 25-year-old age group too. And so there's no counselor position there for that. And I think that if we have that offer and, you know, it could be 27. I'm just throwing that 18 to 25 age group in there, then that we wouldn't have a, you know, an age group for that. But I imagine that would be the age group that we're going to target and be taken care of as well as, you know, school-aged kids as well.
So at 37 and a half hours, is that a benefited position?
I don't know how that works with it being an independent contractor. I don't know if we would be responsible for that.
You're not a town employee, you're a contract employee. I would imagine you would not qualify for benefits.
I have a question. Is there any thought or provision for a certain number of on-call hours for this type of professional? As Mark was just pointing out, there were several instances in the past couple of weeks where it would have been very helpful for the police to have access to this type of counseling.
Right.
That can happen in any hour.
It's certainly something we could look to write into that, into the agreement, certainly, yeah.
That second position, that clinical therapist position, there's places like, what's the place called, Saybrook?
Project Courage.
Project Courage, even the Dagle Foundation. I mean, they have people that can step up in an emergency situation, crisis, crisis.
Right, and if it's that.
Crises don't occur nine to five.
Right. And if it's something like three o'clock in the morning, then there's 211 that would be available. And that would be your go-to then. And then our counselor, then that therapist would follow up with that.
The follow-up is the next day.
Right. So it wouldn't be necessarily, that would be that initial 211. You know, and the police are very versed in that and getting them involved in that immediate attention that's needed. I think our therapists would be that next step. Yes, correct.
But, you know, certainly this type of thinking is consistent with, I think, the modern view of policing where you have social worker-type individuals, therapist-type individuals available.
Actually, Dad, it's what used to be until they closed all the state hospitals. That's what, you know, that's what we did for so many years. You had a resource, you took them to the hospital and they'd be channeled right from there to an agency for mental health counseling. But that disappeared in the early 90s sadly.
Thank you.
Dave, this will be, this funding would take care of one year worth of the contracts?
Correct.
$55,000 and $20,000 for both positions.
Yep. And I think it'd give us an opportunity to see where this position's gone. Like I think, and then come back and, you know, I know that money's going to, hopefully that money will be there, that recovery money. And then that becomes a year, you know, in our budget request, you know, for something like that.
We might be nibbling at this elephant one nibble at a time here. We might see that, you know, between the, listen, $75,000 is not even one tenth of 1% of what we're getting in this American Rescue Fund. So we might see that there is a real need and maybe in the future, there might be more money that gets dedicated to this.
Yeah, there's no doubt there's a need. I'm just worried that the therapist and counselor may need more than eight to 10 hours a week for that crisis intervention. Whereas the Wellness and Mentoring Coordinator is more of a proactive approach. This is a reactive one and reactive could take more than eight to 10 hours a week on any given week. But that's a way to start.
Stuff in the right direction.
We'll go.
Yeah, I was going to say, if Dave comes back to us in two months and says, I'm getting slammed and boy, we could use some, we have the resources to dedicate to that, so.
And we're, it's not taxpayer money directly. Again, it's all taxpayer money indirectly, I get it. But there's a fund that we have. We actually received this year's allocation, a 2-point-something million dollars is sitting in a separate account for us. When we need it, it'll be there.
If it's not too much to ask, maybe six months from now or five months from now.
Come back.
Just come back and just say, hey, what's happening? Where is this being used?
Yep.
And maybe you need more. It may be, it's going well and thank you again.
Right, right.
I think it's good to let us know and the public know how this is, how this is being deployed in the community.
Absolutely.
I just have a feeling this is going to become a very important resource. I think we're going to see that, but time will tell.
But at least we'll have it in place for it to be able to offer. And I think that's important, use of that money, yeah.
Dave, thanks for being here to remind us what you were visioning here. Are there any other questions? Before, thank you, thank you. Hang out in case there's anything else. But the last thing on that list is up to $10,000 for the soup kitchen and pantries. I can tell you something. Your idea as a Board of Selectmen of maybe all the towns can pitch in and buy them a refrigerated box truck, you remember these folks that came to us? It took hold and guess what? All 11 towns are doing it. And I met with the first selectman of Old Saybrook and he was, he was trying to take credit for it. I went, no, 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 you don't understand. Three months ago, we were talking about this. But Carl Fortuna is organizing it. But up to $10,000, they think it's going to be about $100,000 for this refrigerated truck. And that is, that's a capital need that they could use that would really catapult them or at least lock them in to the services they provide.
It does have a lift gate too?
Yes.
Because I remember that was one of the, we found out they had it and do it up.
So I want you to know that that's there. These are immediate needs. This list of American Rescue funding that I've given you tonight, there's six things there. Those are immediate needs and I think important to get off the ground immediately. Shouldn't be waiting until next year to start talking about American Rescue Funds and Dave's mental health idea. We should be hitting that immediately. Food pantry, again, important things. And then, of course, all the technology that is supported. There's a lot more coming, but this is an immediate need that I think I'd ask this board to consider.
I'll move to.
Four motions made. The fifth item on the clinical therapist only lists that one position. I think we should add the Wellness Prevention Mentoring Coordinator.
Up top, no?
Nope, it only lists one of the two positions.
I forwarded some documentation from Dave that had that information in there.
We have it in our packet.
The motion only listed the one position.
Got it, got it. So the motion's got to say Wellness Prevention, it's got to say this as well as this, okay? Good point.
So we're going to vote on this as a package?
Correct.
Not as individual items? Okay.
Does anyone have a problem with that? Because we could do it separately.
No, but I would like to comment because most of the things that are on this list are things that we discussed at our June 2nd meeting, I think.
Correct.
And the figures are approximately the same. But I'm wondering, are these Wi-Fi improvements, the technology, do we have any bids on this? Are we pretty sure? How are we getting the figures for this?
We have, we got, we have some quotes here in the packet.
There are quotes in the packet. And, you know, we have a purchasing policy that's written now. So we have to, anything we buy now, we buy. So these are, yes, the Wi-Fi package is a bid from our IT resource. So it's a single source, if you will, or a trusted source. And then the Zoom thing, it was, it's part of that package. There's only one source for the Zoom hybrid package. You're going to buy it from them. So, so yes, we have got, we'll have documentation for the Finance Director and the Finance Department that would follow in the purchasing plan, policy.
And then the $10,000 for the regional refrigerated truck. I assume that that's going to rotate throughout the region on certain days of the week and so on. But I'm thinking that when we heard the presentation from them, that there were additional needs for immediacy. So in other words, let's say the regional refrigerated truck comes on Tuesdays. Well, then they've still got to store the food locally for the rest of.
It comes on Thursdays, I see what you're saying, but they also are. It comes on Thursdays, I see what you're saying, but I, they, they also are limited in space. And I think what, when we were all talking to her in her presentation, I think this is what she kinda came up with, with us, is we kinda came to this moment, well, this is how you could really help us at this stage. I think she was also just looking for a food donation, $1,000 of food and staples, but I would suspect both, both this group and Karen Share, and they might come to the town for the next four years, getting some of this money, and rightfully so.
All right, I just wanna make certain that we don't think that this is the end of it, this is the beginning.
Well, it's the same thing with the, as we just said about the therapist and the-
This is the beginning.
They mentioned space, they mentioned need for refrigerators or freezers.
Yes.
That was Karen Share, yeah.
This is one aspect of what they're need. This is one, one piece.
Yeah, yeah. A good point, Roseanne. This is, this is the beginning of our journey.
I will move to approve a special appropriation, the amount of $280,000. $280,557 for the following items, with the source of funds being the American Rescue Funds. $5,129 Wi-Fi improvements at East Lime Town Hall. $14,428 virtual meeting package at East Lime Town Hall. $132,000 microwave dishes for emergency public safety management. $44,000 security cameras at various town locations for public safety. $75,000 for wellness prevention mentoring coordinator and for a clinical therapist counselor for East Lime Youth Services. And $10,000 for Shoreline Kitchen and Food Pantry, a regional refrigerated truck. And forward to the Board of Finance for approval, and note a town meeting is required.
Second.
I'll make comments here. I, we have a confirmation from our town attorneys as they deal with the statewide attorney association of municipalities, that we are following the appropriate process on approving funding. Some towns had started just spending the money without going through the appropriations process, but as you know, we get grants all the time. We get free money to the town. We still have to go through the appropriations process. So having, giving the public three chances of participating is an appropriate way to go, and it has been confirmed. So I wanted to put that on the record. Any other comments?
I'm comparing this with our June, July-
June.
June meeting. Okay, I'm just looking to see. It looks as though we covered most of the items that we had discussed initially from that meeting. So I think the only thing that I don't see is, this is from the motion that we had to withdraw, but is there any hope of getting this pump-out boat and having that qualify?
No. I don't, I don't see it. I don't see a path to doing that. I don't see a path to improving the land and the use of the land up at Derre Pond. I don't see a path to fixing the baseball field with this, this funding. We had a request come in the other, yesterday on the town docks. They could use some fixing, but also the original plan was to extend those docks up and around the corner for more fishing vessels. You were there for, at the time when that was thought of and came to fruition and is not, I don't see a path currently, but these, these guidelines have been changing, so maybe in the future.
All right, well, I'd like to vote on this and then have some further discussion about potential uses.
Yes, ma'am. Then, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Looks like just, 5-0, we, it passes. Looks like Jess was able to get us alive.
Yeah, we're back, yep.
So Mrs. Hardy, you had some questions about American funding?
Yes, to see if we could get a little further clarification, because I know that Anna had attended a webinar, and you did, and council of governments are talking about some things which you probably will-
CCM and cost, yeah, there's a lot of discussion coming.
Which you'll probably include in your report, but I'm thinking of things that affect health and well-being, and things such as improvements to our buildings. Can we qualify for touchless faucets? Can we qualify for automatic flush toilets? These are all health-related issues, particularly as we're coming into possibly the next round of the virus with the Delta virus and so on. And these facilities are open to the public, not just our employees. And I know as I go to, go to various places, that many places have actually closed their restroom facilities to the public.
Yeah, I would, initial, based on what I've heard, yes, I would say that that would be a preventive measure, because these funds are treating it like we're in the middle of this coronavirus, not that we're at the end of it. I mean, they're talking about vaccination clinics, they're talking about rewarding people for getting vaccinations, you know, cash. I'm like, where's mine? I got mine early. But yes, I would think that the prevention, the health prevention part, yes. HVAC, no. So a filter, not a HEPA, but whatever you call the HVAC systems with all the filtering and all that.
Protonally.
No, that was a very direct question, and it was a big no.
That was a question I had, because we're bonding money for new HVACs at the high school, and if you're trying to improve air quality, could that qualify? That was a question.
No, okay, well, but, yeah, but, but I would say touchless faucets and all that, and we'll run that one by the resources that we have.
And we had also talked about improvements for water and sewer.
Yeah, that remains. So somehow, it's very directly coronavirus, and then they put an asterisk and said, "Or you could spend it on infrastructure for your water, sewer, and broadband needs." And it seems to be limitless. I have not seen anything that would limit the use when you're talking about the water department and the sewer department. And we can, we will explore that further. We thought we would wait on that, 'cause there's no immediate needs, there's no emergency needs, but we will be exploring that and maybe bringing things to you sooner than later.
And water and sewers related to Flint, Michigan.
Right, right.
Yeah, also, too, I saw the thing, you know, you can provide resources to distressed families and businesses. That was in there. And I was trying to think if that's something we'd wanna do. That's, we couldn't appoint a panel, because I think that's something you'd have to actually have probably people, you know, hire personnel to do something like that, 'cause, you know, no, no one, you can't form a subcommittee of a board to sit down there and go through mountains of paperwork and qualifications and stuff like that.
Applications, yeah.
If, if we ever wanted to consider that, I think you'd have to see if some of that money could be used to hire some resources to process it, 'cause some people have mentioned that, too. They said, "Well, that's in there, can we do that?"
Social serv, you know, cities with social, big social services departments.
They have that resource.
Have that resource, and they, they know their clientele anyway. There's applications on file, and, and they're more inclined to be ready to do that. I, we, we might wanted to figure out ways to do that, take applications for people who might need rent control.
Yeah, but that's what I think you'd have-
To me, I think that's gonna be a crisis come September, when the eviction of renters waiver goes away.
Right now, the town wouldn't have the resources to deal with all those people coming in, and just, you know.
I don't know if landlords are getting supported for all the people who didn't pay the rent.
Well, that's just it, too. Those are the big questions that, you know, we haven't-
Things that we will explore, and Kevin's been doing a lot of research on this, thank you, by the way. You've been sitting in on some seminars and all that. We'll, this will roll out, and I just, I kinda put our motion into, back into first gear. We're not going in reverse, but we slowed it down, and we said, "Let's, let's just take a more conservative approach."
Well, and plus, we got, when that clarification came out, that you didn't have to spend it all, and then, you know, by the end of 2024, you have time now to think this through, and, you know, I think we've done a really good job of identifying what needs to be done right now and address the needs.
Yes, that, this will help.
And here again, too, and I think Paul made a good point, and Dan did, too. I don't know if we funded even close to enough for the clinical therapists and that.
No, but it's a good start.
But, but we're there, so.
We're just in the waters.
Yes.
Well, I definitely would like to get going on the water piece, the water and sewer piece, because we know already that we have some higher-than-normal components in our drinking water.
Yeah, well, and-
That's supposed to be a finish of the new pump houses, so.
Yeah. Any other discussion on this? And Roseanne'd be happy to sit down at any time and form a new list and kind of put that through the filter of the, the new guidelines and see what we can come up with. The Water and Sewer Commission, so you know, is, and of course Brad Cargill retired, so Ben North is our new water engineer, water and sewer engineer downstairs, and they will be compiling a list and bringing that forward to us on immediate needs, so you know. Exit official reports, if there's nothing else.
Parks and Rec hasn't met since our last meeting, so nothing there. But Dan, Mark Sloan and I met with the, we had a fire safety subcommittee. We spoke with the chiefs. We even had someone from public delegations come in to offer some comments and so forth like that. It was a very good interaction by asking the chiefs, you know, basically, how do things work within the department? We reviewed their charters. We've got copies of their bylaws now. And right now, you know, one of the things is the barriers between the two fire departments. They're, those are pretty much disappearing. They do joint training now. They're talking about next month, that now they're gonna start having joint officer meetings. Now, if Flanders gets a call, and they know it's gonna be in an area where it's a little bit more difficult, for instance, if it's out at the north end or by Stones Ranch or something like that, the station of, down at Station 2 Fanatic will automatically start sending someone up there. There's no complaints at all about response times and so forth like that. We did have a communication where someone pointed out a concern over some of the, the way that one of the fires was fought, and, you know, some of the way that some of the personnel were utilized. The chiefs were both aware of that, and they are, they, that's being taken as a lesson learned, and they do debrief that. Dan, anything else I've left out? I mean, we've-
No, I thought it was a very helpful and insightful meeting. There are complexities to those two departments and their interrelationships that I never appreciated before that meeting, and they explained a lot of the intricacies of how it works with volunteers, overtime, full-time, and all those different combinations. So there's a lot to digest, but it was a very good meeting, and it really helped my understanding, and I think we're moving forward.
And the chief said, okay, now that we have their opinion, they encouraged us to go up and meet with their members as well. And to finish up on this, five days ago, Flanders got their new fire truck, so they said, "If you'd like to come up, you're welcome to come up and see their new fire truck." They're very proud of it.
Go ahead, come in.
I'm sure they'll let you do that, too, but they're really excited about having their new fire truck, so.
That's terrific.
And one other thing, too, is, as we've heard about with the fire at Gate, fortunately they didn't have to use that foam, which would have been a serious problem.
Yep.
You see now where all of those containers of foam are now out in the back of Flanders, and they have the new, what's by the eco-friendly foam to put out there. So if we ever have to use that now, what they're using will not be that thing that will adversely affect drinking water and our aquifers or our wetlands.
Yeah, no, it's an important change, and great.
May I ask, who was the author of the communications? I don't see it in the package that's attached. Who the author of the communications that was submitted to the subcommittee?
Ray.
Is it? I couldn't find it.
I couldn't find it either.
Took a lot of time and effort to do it, so I appreciate it.
Oh, it's, it's in mine.
It's, yeah.
No pages left.
Wait a minute.
But that is it.
It is, but it didn't say name.
Who wrote it? Jeff, R-H-E-A-U-M-E. R-H-E-A-U-M-E.
Thank you.
I guess he didn't sign it.
No, it's not in there.
He signed it, and he didn't, he couldn't find it in the body. Appreciate he's taken the time and effort to prepare this communication.
I know, I've got it in mine, right here.
Well, Mark knows, so.
There is communication in your packets.
Yep, communication's in there.
Where are we with exit official reports?
I just finished up with the fire.
Paul, you have something?
Nothing from Inland Wetlands Rally, except they unanimously endorse the individual we approved tonight. Harbor Management and Shelfice Commission, they were appreciative. Mr. Itchery, with being able to present the information he's collected, you arranged for him to have a discussion with town attorney, he stated, so I don't know if that's taken place, but they were appreciative, and they think they have a fight worth fighting, and see what the lawyers have to say to them as well. And then the Public Safety Building, met last week, we had a special meeting to come through some change orders, mostly associated around the fire detection and alarm panel, the need to add a second panel to cover the second floor. So they are moving towards completion. Funding looks okay right now. There's a couple outstanding change orders that aren't must-haves at this time. They don't have a completion date yet, based on just approval on some of these damper things and fire panels. They have to get delivery dates and get them installed, but progress is moving along, and hopefully when we meet next, I'll be able to give you, if Mark doesn't get one before me, when they expect to have a-
They try to be in there by the end of August. That's, that's the rate we have.
Their target right now, they gotta work to get there. Anyone who's had a house built, the last, the last few details usually take longer than you anticipated, but you gotta work to get them done, so. That's all I had tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, a couple of things. Last night, I attended the Historic Properties Commission, and you may recall, last time, we appointed Ben Bullock to the Historic Properties Commission, and last night, he was voted and installed as the chairperson of the commission. And I think he has a great approach, and I think he's gonna serve very well as, as chairperson, and what else? I wanna thank Barbara Love for her service as the chairperson in the past, and she did a wonderful job, too, stepping up. They, they were waiting for a word today, supposedly there was supposed to be a vote on a grant for the Samuel Smith property. Don't know what the result of that is. I haven't heard from anyone yet. Hoping that they got it approved, which would be terrific for the work that needs to be done over there. So that's pretty much it. Farm Day is July 17. I encourage everyone to take advantage of that, the Samuel Smith Farmstead, and go up some cows and things.
Is that why you wore your suspenders?
That's right. I was gonna, gonna help out.
Emotion?
Yeah, I was gonna bail some hay, and, yeah, no, it's gonna be a nice thing and good, nice thing for families, and a nice family event, so July 17, Samuel Smith.
Thank you.
Yep. And then Kevin and I met with representatives from SCORE, and discussing language for their proposal for racism as a public health crisis resolution, and we were trying to come to agreement on what should be in the resolution. I think we made great progress, and we'll be working on a draft of the combined suggestions back and forth, of how we should prepare it and move forward with it. So hopefully, in a couple of weeks, we'll have a draft of that resolution.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Mrs. Hardy?
The last zoning commission meeting was canceled. It was just a technical item with a change to procedure, so that was the only item that was on the agenda, so they canceled, and that's it. I'm a short timer tonight.
I'm a short timer, too. I'll officially say goodbye for the record to Victor Benny, our town engineer, who has spent 11 or 12 years downstairs, really just making things happen. And the Public Works crew is looking for his replacement, they're big shoes to fill. Brad Cargill spent many a year running our water and sewer department. His institutional knowledge, all that stuff that's in his head, he, we tried to transfer, download, if you will, to Ben North, who now runs the department downstairs, and Ben's been on board for about a year, and that was part of the, the idea, is to bring him on early and then, and be able to transfer some of that information. The new pumper was delivered to Flanders School.
Yes, I just covered that last week, yeah.
I know you brought that up at the north side of town. And the Lions had a successful craft show here at the town hall grounds.
Really good weekend.
And I congratulate them, because they take all that money and pour it back into our town and serve our, serve our citizens in our, in our great town. and serve our, serve our citizens in our, in our great town. While, while the Fourth of July got off to a kind of a rainy and soggy and cold start to the, you know, the unofficial start of summer, really, is, you know, beginning of July, we know the good, good weather's coming, and our beaches have been packed during the nicer days. And, and I think we've sold more beach passes than we ever have in the history of our town. So people are anxious to get out. I just ask everybody to remember to be kind to one another. People are still a little edgy, and there's been some incidences where people just are, well, I think we're used to being six feet apart, and then when we get a little closer together, people get just a little wacky. So that's, that's going on, and the police will tell you that as well. They've been called to many disturbances in our town and in our state park as well. That's really all I have tonight.
Can I add one thing? I should have done this before. A week ago, Roseanne and Dan were there, too. The movie theater is back open for business, so it was a lot of fun. Terry, George, children were there. It was just really nice to see it open, and I have seen people going in, so go grab a movie at the Niantic Theater. It's open, and they pop their own popcorn. They don't bring in the bag stuff that was popped elsewhere.
Oh, boy.
Weeks ago, and.
I had four ribbon cuttings that week. William Pitt, I think it is, Sotheby's opened up downtown, and the farmer's market reopened. And La La Rona had a scheduled event, but they had to cancel it at the last minute. They said to reschedule that.
Yeah, this is a little public service announcement on Saturday, the 17th, at 7:30.
Yes, thank you.
It's a night of remembrance for members of the southeastern community, Connecticut community, who lost a loved, loved one to the COVID virus. There'll be a little ceremony at the town green at 7:30. And then Main Street will be lined with several hundred luminaries starting about 8:30, just to give people an opportunity to remember their family members, friends, neighbors, who maybe have lost as a result of the pandemic.
That's great, I'm glad, that's great, great. It'll be great to see the town come down there and support that. There's no public here this evening, so there's no need for selectmen's response. We go to an executive session now, so.
I will move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, okay, well.